One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Go ahead, front the meeting, I'll ask the court secretary to call Earl.
Barnes, Bradley, here, icing, Lynch, pistol.
Here, here. Let's go over the agenda, I would ask for a motion second to change the agenda to move Water and Sewer Department to the first, and then also, or to put it right after the minutes and monthly financials, move it to the top of the department head reports along with the water resolution. Motion second to do that.
I'll second it.
Motion second in our discussion, ask for a vote.
Barnes, Bradley, yes, Lynch, pistol, Ward.
Yes.
At this time, I'm gonna have you look over the minutes and the monthly financials. Entertain a motion second to approve those as presented.
I'll second.
In discussion, I'll ask for a vote.
Barnes, Bradley, yes, Lynch, pistol, Ward.
Yes.
Brings us to Water and Sewer Department, we'll do that first, and then we'll check.
Alright, um, the water loss for Clinton was forty percent, Burt Ridge was thirty-five percent, Den Arbour thirty-six percent, uh, that's down as a total, uh, as thirty-seven percent, I think it's forty-one last loss I reported, uh, we're down at Burt Ridge from forty-seven percent to thirty-five percent, uh, from forty-two to forty, so we're climbing down slowly each month, so we're working on that, uh, reports on sixteen inch line, the sixteen inch line is completed, water test to come back, it is full of water now, it's not in service without doing the pressure reducing valves where we can fill the tanks with it, we would blow some lines, we opened up right now, but that line is completed, um, let's see, I've got other thing in my.
Looks good out there on ninety-five.
Yeah, and they did a really good job on the dredging up, and they did a good job on probably those contractors we were gonna work with, so proud of that, um, I wanna come to you guys tonight, the commissioner, the board has, our water board has selected with your approval, a fifth and final commissioner, and it's Kristen Fleming, so with your consent, we'll welcome her.
Yeah, that'll complete our board of commissioners, Kristen Fleming works over there, right next to Mickey and Farm Bureau, CPA, Sharp, Marla, his daughter, Bill's, Bill's, married to Bill, Bill is Fleming's son, so, I'll entertain a motion second to approve Kristen Fleming.
Make a motion.
Motion second in our discussion, I'll ask for a roll call.
Barnes, Bradley, yes, icing, Lynch, pistol, Ward.
Yes.
Excellent, that's a good, good choice.
Highway sixty-five is keeping us busy, we've been real busy out there all day, I'm going to be heading there as soon as I get done here, uh, got some guys up there right now, uh, but they are getting along the line, but yeah, but we're still breaking it back this way, um, had the workshop, Tuesday night, second workshop, most of you guys were all there, uh, I think we've come to an agreement, and I wanna bring that before you, uh, I think we've decided to go with the, that rate three, as we presented.
Yeah, the water rates, the commission's been formed, rate studies, Arkansas River Water, Bobrod a couple of years ago, CWB's been on it for quite some time, uh, we've had a couple of meetings, you mentioned, I think we need to just keep moving forward on that, uh, we've sent, I think, one point two last year, million dollars to the water department, someone brought up one of the workshops, all over Arkansas towns, sit around and go broke trying to hatch and go as they go, we have to, we have to address the issue. So, you gave us three options, we had a budget meeting last night, like everybody's budget in the county has tied his dick's hat band, you know, uh, we're in okay shape, but we don't have a lot of extra thrown around, so we looked at that, and I think we've come to a consensus on, uh, number three, so, right now, as far as, we're just gonna have a motion in a second for this resolution that's in front of you that I have somewhere. Uh, this is yours, uh, have a resolution here, uh, of intent regarding Clinton Water and Sewer, uh, rate increase, uh, like I said, we've talked about it, we had three options, this is something that, uh, we'll fine tune over the next week, we have a public hearing in Clint, and if you guys wanna say anything on it, or we'll chat at this time, but I think we're pretty familiar with it, so after we discuss or say anything, I'll entertain a motion in a second to get that moving forward on the resolution. It's a resolution of intent regarding Clinton Water and Sewer rate increase, talks about need for, uh, our debt obligation, you know, you have to have so much money on hand to back up a bond, and we're dangerous, getting in dangerous territory with that, and have been for a while, uh, this is, uh, is in draft form right now, I think it was written that way, so, as, if we get the approval on that to move forward, we'll, I intend it coming out, or, if you all want to say anything or not, uh, I'll entertain a motion in a second to approve that as presented.
I make the motion.
I'll second it.
Motion second, in discussion.
I'll just point out, this is a non-binding resolution, this is, in the workshop, there was some discussion that it would be, it would be good to signal to A and R C, who might be asking what the credit live, and other, other note holders, to signal to them that we're taking this seriously, and that we're, we intend to take some action on that, so that's why we're after this, but it's non-binding, it's statement of intent.
Just keeps us going the right direction, any other discussion? I'll ask for a roll call.
Barnes, Bradley, yes, icing, Lynch, pistol, Ward.
Yes.
Thanks, Will, I'll, anything else?
Does anybody have anything else for me?
CWB, travel a long way.
You guys have been a long way.
Yeah, yeah. Will, on the water loss percentage, is that taken into account, the breaks up here, I mean, once that's done, that'll come down substantially.
Yes, um, kind of, on the, on the Denard side of things, it was pretty much, we kept it from what we could from last, because there's no way, I mean, keeping up with that many breaks, and that's where most of them are now, on the, the Clinton side of that now, where they're breaking now, that'll be on next month, so we'll just have to, it's real hard to keep up with for.
You're not gonna make the All-Star team.
What we did is every time we drained the tank, I went ahead and took that as a can of water, and we drained that Denard tank several times later, or, it had drained, we haven't drained it, but.
Anything else for, anything water or sewer related? Good luck to you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, thanks guys, traveling.
We just need to spend some time together.
You don't see each other enough during the day.
Yeah, exactly.
Thank y'all, thank y'all, we'll be in touch, I'll check with you tomorrow, and definitely all the same.
Any clean sir back there.
I appreciate it, man. Brings us back up to department head reports, Airport Commissioner Alex Kinnon.
I don't have, good evening, I don't have anything to report, we haven't met since our last meeting, so, we're still moving forward on various things, the biggest one on deck right now is moving the fuel farm up here, and the forthcoming debate on where exactly that will be up here, are there any questions? Uh, no.
Have you had any report on the condition of the people from the wreck the other day?
Uh, nothing I'd be wanting to put on the record, I mean, they, I think a couple of them are overnight, but, but that's really all I have.
Yeah, this guy flying the plane, pretty good job, and, that's one thing I'll mention about our first responders, and police, and fire chief, they were just like they're quick.
And our mayor, and our mayor had quick response.
But y'all looked like you were hanging out at the bridge, that was pretty good, that was really good, and the pilot did a way good a job.
For what it's worth, speaking as an airplane guy, the airplane did what it's supposed to do, and those, you know, the structure around the cabin absorbed a lot of the impact, and kept the force from transmitting to that, that's how it works, now the airplane doesn't have landing gear, now the engine's not very well attached, yeah, yeah, there's already things broken on it, but the point being, those things breaking are what was able to cushion the blow for those on board.
Yeah, well, they were lucky they were in extension, I think the tank.
Have we got all the construction done on the building over there?
On the, on the building, I'm sorry.
About the hanger?
Yeah.
Uh, as far as I know, there was a debate, we had to go back to those guys about needing to repaint that one hanger down there, but as far as I know, everything's done at the moment, I'll know, I'll know more than the next meeting, frankly, we've been working pretty hard on the master plan, and this last minute dealing with fuel farm side, the building's just not on my mind right now.
Well, I said, I mean, hanger.
Yeah, well, yeah, six of one, oh, are you talking about hangar one, this hangar right here?
Yeah, one, yeah.
Yeah, that is done, that, that's actually, uh, pretty nice, you're welcome to swing by there, I know they're, uh, Mr. Pickett's been off sick for a little bit, but, uh, you know, the lighting's doing great, they had plumbing problems, that's doing great, roofs quit leaking, uh, the lighting's really handy because there were all engines in there, and it's just, it's just a good thing. That's what happens.
Thank you. Brings us to animal control, we have the county, more important meeting, I think, Tim and Laurie's there, Tim Pike probably, uh, last month in the city had nine calls, we picked up two dogs, no cats, no pigs, and didn't write any citations, Lori is working on a kennel expansion, she got some new kennels up there, when they're done with that, they're gonna have twenty inside the building, new kennels, along with the six outside, right now she's got fourteen cats and fifteen dogs, she sent thirty, I think, dogs to animal rescue this last month, so she's getting kinda empty out there, and we got a little bit of, city's gonna help her with a little bit of, little bit of concrete cutting, I think, this weekend, so, uh, so anyway, she's streamlined right now, appreciates any help she can get always, any dog food, uh, that's all I have on that, on animal control, I'll answer any question I can, but, much to it, brings us down to Fire Department Chief Webb.
Been busy this last month, uh, we did have a big truck, eighteen hundred on fire, got a chalked off right in the gentleman's parking lot, it's, uh, had a car fire in front of cash area, which turned out to be a blowhead cask, I believe, what it was, a little fire. Had a wreck today in front of Howard's Antiques, two car accident, stove fire at the townhouse apartments, somebody found a cook cheese in a stove, uh, we had a brush fire report at, behind Patton Square Apartments, it was actually their manager, burned it and brushed behind it, but he didn't report to anybody, and it looked like the buildings were on fire. Small plane crash, we attended that, also had a grass fire at the feed store, south of town, that's the calls that we've been on for this last month, um, I am looking at getting a new building for our radio system that's up on top of the mountain, uh, I don't have a quote with me, except for truck, you got it? She's have a quote.
Two thousand five hundred fourteen twenty-five.
Has to put a building, replace the building we have up there that has our repeater in it, which also stores, the repeater for the school, and I'm not sure if the vendor in County Water still has anything in there or not, they were redoing some stuff up there, but they had some instruments inside that building also, uh, the building's gone through the tornado, uh, it's not in good shape, and we don't need that equipment ruining ours, so we're looking at buying a new building to put up there, uh, talked to Dana a little bit, where I'm looking at right at the moment is we have three thousand dollars in radio system update, which, since this is a building for the radio system, I'm assuming it will go under that, I've got a call in to, act eight thirty three people about this, they have not returned my call, if by chance they do not allow that, which it should be allowable, but if it's not, I may have request to move that money from the fire truck fund enough to cover that building.
Do you need anything tonight, just go ahead, I mean, it's your.
Go ahead, basically, if we have to pull the money out of that fire truck.
I'll entertain a motion second to approve, uh, transfer of funds if necessary up to amount needed for a new building, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Yeah, any other discussion on that?
Gotta be also, and take it out of radio system update if they approve it.
Yeah, as stated by the.
It should follow as that.
She will get it from the right spot.
It should follow as that, but I wanted verification from them to make sure everything's right, and if they say no for some reason, that's, that's another option.
Okay, I'll ask, I'll ask for a roll call.
Barnes.
Yes.
Bradley, icing.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Pistol.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Anything else?
Uh, due to funding issues, we will not be having movies in the park in August, uh, the movies have gone up tremendously on us to get newer movies, uh, you're looking at nine hundred to a thousand dollars a movie, uh, we just decided we.
That's a, that's a big ticket price.
The fire department just cannot continue everything we do in the community at this present time, we're still looking at the haunted house, we'll scare them and swear and all that, but we're just having to cut some stuff, and that's one of them's gonna have to be cut.
Do a play. Yeah, I appreciate what you have done, and you have, that's pretty popular, you always gotta.
We might be, we get back to it, but just this year, we're, we're just not gonna be able to, other than that, if you have any questions I can answer, I'll be glad to answer.
Thank you, Chief, brings us to Park and Ranks Department, Charles Wilson.
Everything's going pretty good, Jamie Reeves, he's been working diligently on trying to get us back into a new softball, you know, he'll have more on that next month, to have all his answers, uh, everything, so should be able to give everybody updates, should have everything back to normal again, should be able to have quite a few games, I hope we, uh, the guys are working on cutting grass this week, and as soon as I get back, uh, I'm gonna start working on getting ready for the chuckle gun races, get everything cut, and slicked off, and start getting ready for the big show, uh, and I think the guys, they're actually looking forward to it, so.
They'll do good every year on that.
Grove, and, anybody's got any questions, or?
Got a fishing derby tomorrow, don't we?
Fishing derby tomorrow, yeah, the guys are coming in, they just sprung it on me today at one o'clock, and, so the guys are coming in at five in the morning to weed it around the pond banks and slick it all off, so all the kids have a good time.
Good deal.
That's what time tomorrow?
At nine o'clock, they'll start it at nine.
If you want to weed it, you can be there at five.
It was that, it was a derby, derby tomorrow.
Right, you don't want the rain to. I just, I'm sure they just didn't, I mean, generally, we always keep it slicked off, but we've been busy trying to get a few street stuff done, and this rain kinda kicked everything on hand here, so we're kinda got behind, but we'll have it fixed, it'll be ready for them by nine o'clock.
Where are we on the tennis court lights?
I need nine thousand dollars.
Nine thousand dollars?
Yes, ma'am.
For what?
Lights, electrician, wire, and some other set of poles.
We just had the.
And a breaker box, meter loop, and a disconnect.
So the lights have been down on the ground for two years?
The lights have put up in the building, they've been put up in the building for two years, the poles are built, but we've gotta have, the lights that it require are gonna cost us about twenty-seven, twenty-eight hundred dollars for the bulbs, your wire is gonna cost you around three thousand, it's seven something foot.
I think it's pointed out that the type of bulbs we have require bigger wire.
Bigger wire, and then you gotta have a meter loop, you gotta have Pettington set pole, then you're gonna have to have four, five hundred dollars for a meter loop, then you're gonna have to have a disconnect box, everything's set, I have my plugs in the ground, I have everything stubbed, and then you gotta have lights and electricians, Charles just can't go out there and pull them up and stretch the wire and get up and go work that way, but it's ready.
I thought Petty Jim was gonna put them on the poles for.
Uh, just putting them on the pole, it's a big thing, I mean, I can put them on the poles, and then we can have a crane come in and set them, and then all we can do is run the wire.
We're, we're at a point, we need to.
We're at a point that I gotta have money, that's, I mean, I can't do it with.
Well, that's the, I didn't know that, I mean, I've been asked by.
They're, they're ready.
It's, it's summer, and the lights aren't on, and so I didn't know.
They're ready, but, I mean, with all the financial stress and everything everybody's been in, I mean.
We're at a point, we made, one of us, we talked about, was we got those bulbs that we got over, and we could use, use bulbs.
And I've been working with electrician, I think he's gonna volunteer his time, so that's gonna save us a lot, but he wants to run, he wants to have, uh, everything mounted on the poles, and the wire's run through into the poles, so he don't have to get up and do all that, so I've gotta make it convenient for him, so.
We need, we need bulbs, and we probably will have to use, use bulbs.
And he's actually working on the price to, there may be an LED that'll fit in that, we'll just have to fix it.
I put those lights from, um, Cersei, I think they were, they were coming down with, uh, they were still good.
The fixtures are great.
Yeah.
But the bulbs are a hundred and seventy-six dollars a piece, they're nickel high, they ain't, they're that big around, and that long, so.
We've not as far as we can go without wire, the wire's a little bit bigger than, than.
And, I mean, they've been in boxes, they're all still wrapped in the boxes, and they're put in storage, that, so, they're not, they're just like they was when they could shift in, so.
Calls are built, painted, everything's ready to go, I just gotta have some funding. Anything else? Thank you, brings us to Police Department Chief John Ovi.
We had a pretty busy month and everything, uh, we've, uh, had like thirty incident reports, eleven accidents, um, two hundred and thirteen property checks and extra patrols, um, wrote fifty-two citations, fifty-nine warnings, uh, did six felony arrests during the, during the month, and, uh, basically, we're on track, Kelly's gonna be graduating the academy next week, next Friday, so we'll be fully backed up, fully staffed, and, and, just, uh, just spent a day, we had, uh, been kinda thinking about the officer that lost his life over in Stone County, um, he's a pretty good guy, so, I'm praying for him, prayer over his family.
Yeah, John went down there, and I think y'all were pretty thick.
And we, we escorted him down to the Crown Lab, a long ago, and.
Yeah, I appreciate you sending trucks down there, cars down there with them, appreciate you making them pack, and when you're done, if you need to leave, you skedaddle, uh, anything else for, I was gonna mention that, uh, governors, flags are a half-staffed, they'll determine, anything?
They're gonna release his body, I think, in the morning, around nine-thirty or something, never know when.
Well, that's a friend of yours, so, sorry about that, don't know what tomorrow holds. Anything else for the Chief? I appreciate it, like I say, if you need to cut a trail, let's see, uh, brings us down back to Charles Wilson, Street Department.
Uh, I called in, I'm going with you, but as soon as I get back, I got some bids, fixing to come in and start doing some measuring, getting the bids for the streets over there, we're filming, uh, had a guy quit on me, the eighth, he just walked out, moved to Virginia with the brother, and kinda, kinda got me in a little bit of a tight spot, but I'll catch up, and, we always seem to hold our heads above water regardless of what happens.
Yeah, you've been shorthanded.
Yeah, off and on, all year, but we, we built our own and kept moving forward, so, and.
Pretty much looks good, but manpower doesn't.
Manpower kinda gets rough on the circuit, sometimes, I mean, you gotta do what you gotta do to make it all work.
Appreciate working on townhouse up there, we're looking at some flooding up there, and I think the new owner's kinda spending quite a bit of time up there, and he's realizing, hey, there's some drains here that, on him that need work, and we're doing that, and had a Johnny Moore came up there, we looked at some trees, we might give him some relief where the city can, so.
Yeah, we've assisted on, all I can assist them, I mean, anything I can do for them to help them out, I've helped them out.
Yeah, that, that.
It's much appreciated, the, the guy bought this place, I guess, and didn't realize what, he thought it was just normal storm drain problem, but, once he got the cleaning and everything up, he's like, wow.
Well, it's getting better, it's getting a lot better, yeah.
So, once he gets it all cleared and gets it working back like it was, uh, we were worried about the houses below him.
Right, yeah, Tom Shaw's next.
Yep.
Are we gonna do some more chip and seal this year?
Uh, probably gonna do paving, uh, we've got them lined, we've got that there in front of Petty Jim Electric, and we've got all them big trucks and all that stuff coming in and out, got the concrete trucks, and that highway's starting to crack and break, coming apart, if we don't seal it now, and get it up to shape with them big trucks, in another year, it's gonna come apart on us, and then we'll have a big problem, so.
The chip and seal, it's kinda the same deal, but that took us a lot of time, that's held up really well, that was a good, that was a good move.
I really think it's gonna eat up what I have, I really don't think I'll have enough to carry over chip and seal.
That's, that's pretty big, there's a lot of traffic there, past our station, concrete plant, Pettington.
Get north of town done next year, I've got a couple, couple streets up there, once the, the state highway gets their highway done, I've got a couple people up there, a couple, we're set make houses on a couple little streets, and we'll come in and try to work with them and get their streets fixed, get them open back up, do some paving up there for them, and that'll be, uh, the end of all the drought.
Uh, also, it is, uh, you got some more, uh, patch asphalt in, I know we gotta get over to Honey Hills.
Yes, the guys.
Don't mention any names, Sharon Richardson.
What were the name of the places?
Just got it in, and.
Old Honey Hill Group, I love you.
The guys, they've been instructed to, uh, they're gonna start slinging coal mix and.
Coal mix, that's what I was trying to say.
And once they get, get everything kinda tied down, and we'll get her back under it, but I'll catch it up.
Anything on?
Uh, I'd like to see if I can get a week's vacation, always have more vacation than I can use, and I like to take a week with me, if I could, but if I can't, it's no big deal, and, I'll wait up to y'all.
You need a motion second, Dana for a check, entertain a motion second to cut a check for a month of vacation.
I'll second it.
Motion second, in our discussion, ask for a roll call.
Barnes.
Yes.
Bradley, yes, icing.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Pistol.
Yes.
Don't spend it one place.
Probably will.
Buy the chops off of.
Probably will, probably will get to spend either.
So I can borrow it.
I just pay.
I don't.
And like I said, everything, I mean, everything's going good, and I don't know if they have a new boss for the state highway, or what, but every time I dig my tractor out, start more streets, they're right beside me, the city has looked tremendous this year.
Hey, that was a great job keeping the city looking good, and, and you too, you and your crew has too.
Charles has been really thin, I know, a lot of people, you can look and say, well, this isn't done, this isn't done, but he's been, he's been pretty thin.
Been up and down, we've gone, probably an average of, time this is said and done, probably three months with two employees, and that's right there in my busy grass season, it takes a.
Well, that's effective on grass, on ditches, on pickup, and stuff, and that's one of the deals.
And it's been a year, I mean, this randomly got last week, the grass has come alive, it's unreal, in a week's time, how much the grass grows, so everybody, the guys are all over there, they'll have it cleaned up this week, get the park cleaned up, and, and they'll cut out and do a few things I told them to do, so, we'll get it called up, maybe get us another good hand, I've got one young man, extremely good guy, likes to be there, loves to work, so, if I could find another one just half as enthused as him, we'd be right back on track.
Anything else for Charles, thank you, that brings us down to zoning, we leapfrogged zoning in Parkerville Hills.
Five or six people, at least vendors there this time, we were already talking about probably September, October Park Festival, maybe having a Blues Festival again, trying to just combine those events and grow.
That's the last Saturday of every month, so there's always something going on in the park.
Yeah, we're just trying to establish it a set date, so people will know when it is, like Charles. Yeah, we're just trying to establish it as a set date so people will know when it is, like Charles mentioned. We're getting ready for the big, uh, big show with the cowboy catfish treadmill ride, uh, the catfish farmers working, so it's actually up. They are supportive of it this year, so, uh, that's gonna be beneficial for us. Just doing different activities. Uh, also, you know, this time of year, we have a lot of problem properties. Trying to do, uh, make what progress I can with some properties, some having limited success with, some are taking longer than usual. Just out there trying. We're really looking at, uh, some of our ordinances to make sure that, I want, make sure I'm doing the process right as far as taking it to the zoning commission to, uh, declare the nuisance. Then they make a recommendation, have to come to, uh, city council for approval of, uh, nuisance and different things like that. Try to make sure I'm doing all the noticing of the property owners and different things, but that's just a part of the process. Little progress here. Not at all.
Anything else for somebody from the council?
On Highway sixty-five, one ninety-five, what is going to happen with that?
There at ninety-five east and sixty-five? Uh, hopefully now that we've gotten the. We had a little issue with, uh.
Ease of easement.
A big issue. Didn't really think that would be the time to approach them about the property. It's kinda been a good and bad thing, but what the state's done and then what the city's done has cleared the property up a lot, but unfortunately it's made it very, very visible. And then I think it's also traded hands recently, so we've kinda had two or three little issues going on there that, uh, haven't been too much good, but certainly can start that process on that.
I know past, that that's been an issue with past zoning official and, um, he, uh, kinda threatened him, I guess, apparently, 'cause he was like, I'm gonna go up there and tell him, but I was kinda hoping that, that that might resolve itself on its own with the highway.
I think the new owner's, is talked about once they get the sixteen inch end, which is done and we'll see. I think that, I think that'll take shape.
There were a few issues that kind of.
There was a couple.
That progress.
Access off sixty-five was a big, two accesses or three.
That's the one property owner, things like that. Yeah, that's.
Sticky. It's less sticky than it was. Anything else for?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to see if, Philip, you can, like, next month, put, um, put together a, something in word, document or something that kinda puts the timelines on property. You know, when their first notified, you know, and, and kinda, 'cause I don't have any idea. When somebody calls me about something like that, I, I'd like to have some kind of reference point or something. So that if, if I know this is where it is, then, you know, kinda like where the process is and, and, and what the owner.
Yeah, I've been kinda working on a procedures manual for myself, trying and when Chad gets back, I'm probably gonna have him approve like a first draft of a letter. You know, notification, warning, because it's such a litigious time that you just really have to be careful. Yeah, but I'll be glad to.
Yeah, just a time, but you wouldn't, you, I'm not saying attach any documents or letters or anything. But just like a, like a timeline.
A complaint, then ten days to respond and the action within the first thirty days or something.
'Cause I think other people that ask questions like that, I think that's, that's something we should be.
I'll be glad to.
Yeah, we should be able to tell.
I'd say it's like the, like the fire department, you know, how many calls they did. Same kinda deal, you know, I did this and this and this this month. Just some kind of reference. Borrow, borrow deals.
We have two, we have two, um, weekends coming up in August that we're gonna be cleaning. So I have a lot in my neighborhood, as you well know. I have a lot. It, it, it frustrates me to walk in my neighborhood. Uh, so I will be out with my lawn mower on the other days and working in my own neighborhood to see if we do have some shut-ins with these people that I know are not shut-ins and they can probably mow their yard, but I'll be doing my good deed cleaning up their yard.
But I don't always see anybody that's got, notices particular properties. I'll be glad for them to call me at any point in time.
You've got something.
I don't make regular raps.
On the, on the third, we'll be meeting at, I'll just say seven AM. It gets light pretty early. Let's say six-thirty, we'll start there. It's Sean Collier's house. That's at the corner of Baroja and Yellow Jack Lane, not Dan and Peggy's house. Yeah, so I said that, I think I said at Dan and Peggy's. I meant the property that joins Dan Oaf's business, so the corner of Baroja and I think he used to work for the city somewhere and he's volunteered at this time and so anybody.
I'd just say anybody that's in your neighborhood, that you represent your neighborhood.
No, that, oh, yeah, you don't have to show up there. Just get after it, but ones on sixty-five and Baroja right around there is where we're gonna start, so.
Did you say the third?
The third of August and then the seventeenth.
Okay.
I think that's, I think those dates are right.
I even think about, uh, I called, uh, I haven't called before, but I will, I will.
Well, we need to.
Just to see, you know, clean up the size of streets. We used to have prisoners that would go and do that through in the city and I don't know if they've been doing that anymore. If they're doing it outside the county, yes.
My wife's sending her prisoner. He's going through it, so. Bring a mower, a weed eater, chainsaw, anything like that, anything like that. Definitely a weed eater and a mower. But it's, it's your, I mean, if you break the shaft or whatever, it's, sorry, it's volunteer. And if you're on sixty-five, uh, you'll have to wear a vest and we will have those, you know, we have to sign up. It sounds like we're probably gonna hang out around Baroja and around that, you know, some of us will be weed. Anything else for zoning? Thank you. Brings us down to, I guess, levying the millage. We've done the water rate ordinance selection, which that was just typed up as an ordinance selection. We just did a resolution on one, two, or three. We selected three to move forward on. Uh, that brings us down to ordinance levying the millage. The first reading, this is what we look at every year. Uh, we'll do three readings of this. Uh, our millage right now for city taxes is two-point-nine. We can go up to five-point-oh as a city. Uh, each, each tenth of a mil, uh, so if we went from two-point-nine to three-point-oh, each tenth, uh, according to Emma Smiley, would generate safely about thirty-two-hundred dollars a year, uh, per tenth of a mil. So with the remaining two-point-nine up to five, that would, you could, you could generate over sixty thousand dollars a year. I don't think it's probably a very good time to, we're looking at water rates and everything. I'm in favor of just leaving that what it's at at two-point-nine. It's been that for a while. But for argument's sake, that's what it would generate safely, thirty-two-hundred dollars a year for the city. And maybe it's four thousand. Uh, and I'm pretty comfortable with that. So at this time, on the first reading, the ordinance that we have is ordinance levying, uh, a mil, remaining at two-point-nine for personal property tax for general operations. It goes in general operation from the city. Uh, that's an ordinance. Uh, entertain a motion to second to put this on the first reading by Ty Longley.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Motion to second. Any discussion on that?
And this is just, we're just gonna, we're just gonna do this, the first reading this month?
First reading and, yeah, we'll come each month if you wanna add to it or amend it or whatever. You got three months, but. But for the sake of arguments, thirty-two-hundred dollars per tenth of a mil. Some, some cities max it out. We're, we're not. Uh, anything else? I'll ask for a, uh, roll call.
Lawrence?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yes.
Isten?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Pistol?
Yes.
Or?
Yes.
An ordinance levying a two-point-nine mil real personal property tax for general operations of the city of Clinton, Arkansas for other purposes.
Okay, that brings us down to, that's all the business we have. Brings us to public comments. I think I have John the Verge and then anybody else. John, you go first. You're up. John, yeah. You're as deaf as me.
Yeah, we're gonna have. Maybe Bruce.
Get ready. Go.
A couple weeks ago, we held a meeting here with Media Three and talked a lot about, um, problems with their service. So I'd like to let you know tonight that there's more problems besides service, and that is safety. I came home Tuesday night from being out of state, found out that the cable runs from the power pole over my house had come off an intermediate pole and was about a couple feet off the ground. So I called, um, the forty-forty number, which went to the call center because it was after hours. I expected that. And I made a report and asked them to come out and, uh, pick up the cable. And while you're at, at it, have crew here. Why don't you, I don't like to service anymore, so just take it off my house and, and done with it. It'll never be a problem again. They said, fine, we'll do that. Uh, being a safety issue and having been a safety engineer most of my life, I expected a very prompt response to this because safety's not even gonna hurt. Well, this morning, uh, they hadn't done anything, so I called Media Three and, uh, rolled over into their, this was at, just after nine o'clock, rolled over into their, uh, call center and was put on hold, on hold, on hold, on hold, and I gave up. Okay? I mean, I need something done, so I called City Hall and I called Philip. He came out and took a couple pictures and then he went over to Media Three, talked to them. And, uh, what, an hour, hour and a half later, he comes back and he's got a piece of paper that they have generated a work order to, um, pick up the cable three weeks from now. It's a safety issue. I'm supposed to work around this thing for three weeks. Frustrated. Philip was frustrated. Um, I do thank him very much for his assistance in it. Took some time to, to, to get involved. I called Pedigee because this wire originates on their pole and asked if they could come and just cut the thing down so I can coil it up. And they didn't wanna do that after having discussed it amongst themselves, called me back. The reason's they cut twofold. Uh, they weren't real explicit about stating them, but basically was they didn't wanna cut the wire because they didn't know how it would affect the rest of Media Three's service in the area. And there was some concern about who's gonna pay for us to go up the pole and do this work. They just gotta, you know, crew of three to five men and a truck. I mean, it costs money. So that's a dead end. So I went down to the office, myself, just after, or late this morning. Actually, right about noon, whatever. Um, talked to Benita, okay, talked to Benita. And, um, she said that the original call for service was never logged at the call center.
Where are we at on it right now?
Where are we at right now? The thing is about a foot and a half off the ground right now.
No, I mean, no, it, it is the last, and I'll, I'll address it in the morning, uh, but did, uh, do we have a work order or is it?
We have a work order. The estimated, uh, date for that is August eighth.
We can probably.
There's a little bit more to this. Benita told me that, uh, is the CEO or whoever, whoever the boss is, is booked being out on Monday. And she said that it's a possibility with no promises that, uh, a crew might be out on Monday. Because they have another wire down on Sixteen West that they have to leave on the ground because they don't have a crew to come and fix it.
Isn't it beside your, on your road where you can't drive to your, is it by your, your mobile home?
No, it's draped across the roots of my trailer, draped around in front of my shop building. I can probably get my tractor past it without getting tangled up, but I have a flatbed trailer there. I'd like to pull out so I can load my tractor.
Just cut it.
No, no, don't cut it. I, I.
No, suppose it's, here's the thing. Suppose.
I, I, I get the deal. I.
I was energized to have a seventy-year-old man trying to remove the cable.
Oh, that's probably not.
I get it. We.
Problem number one is, is the electric company owns that pole that's on and it's leased to the, the space. So it's the electric company's issue if the cable company won't come do it. It's not the city's issue.
That's why I called Pedigee. They said no.
They're the ones that leased that pole space.
I know that. But they said no, they can't do that again.
But I'm just saying, I'm just saying that the city can, you know, we can call and ask, but they're still up to them.
Where I, where I'm at right now is I have from Benita that maybe with no promises, a crew might be out, might be out on Monday. Otherwise it's scheduled for August eighth.
I think we can surely go early.
I'm sorry.
I think we can surely get something done by Monday. I'll.
I mean, I'd go out there with a pair of hammers, pliers, and cut the wire, but that is not what I should be doing.
Do you not have cable TV?
I haven't had cable TV in five or six years. Why? 'Cause the service sucks. Excuse me, but.
Okay. I'll try to address that.
The purpose of my speech here was to let you know there are other issues besides service level, that there are some safety concerns. They do not put safety at a very high priority. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else for?
I'd like to ask a question right quick.
Yes.
Uh, I talked to John way in here and I know it's Randy's here. Are, is the county or anybody gonna try to do something for this fallen officer coming back tomorrow or do you know?
Uh, we, we're, we're talking about it. I'm gonna be talking with the sheriff out there. We're, we're reading about it and trying to get with him, figure out something.
Oh, yeah, you can get with DL because he's.
Well, we got together today and it was a real short, quick, I mean, I'm proud of everybody.
Time we got it all, all this stuff, it was short notice.
It was a short notice to do, but I heard from the, coming back through, so I didn't know if the county wanted to try to do some, try to get as much time as I can to get involved.
Yes, sir.
Okay. But I didn't know if you knew or.
Okay.
If I find out what time they're actually gonna, legally, I mean, but they said that it would be around nine-thirty, nine-forty-five.
Would they like to tie it up?
Yeah. What it is, they could do from down there.
You find out any more of what time you wanna do it off.
Cause I'm assuming that if this is, you wanna do, see, do something.
Sure, always. I mean, you have a DL, he's good. He's not doing anything. He's, he's really good in spur of the moment. Fix that line. Uh, okay, brings us to, uh, Mayor's comments. Uh, Mike Hardison was the pilot and, uh, dude, dude did a great job, saved a lot of lives. He was banged up pretty good and he kept apologizing to that guy for wrecking his plane, but, I mean, several others saw it. I think Debbie Gray was there and some others, people I didn't know, but guy could've hit a power line, could've landed on the bridge, could've, but he just set it down easy and saved three lives and probably a lot more, so that's, that's worth mentioning. Uh, and DL, David Marlock was there quick, Mike Snowdon, Daisy Gray, and Richard Hillis. They, y'all got there quick, 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 quick. So, good thing. Very pleased with the selection of the final commissioner for Kristen Fleming. I think he's a great, uh, department selection. I'm happy with Will and his crew. I'm happy with the city council, uh, persistence on, on the water and sewer over several years, just keep grinding it out. So I'm very grateful for the city council we had, for all the way from Zeke to Todd to Dickie, the things he got done and, and Will Henshaw. I think we've got some good leadership, certainly on the city council, uh, as well. I think Jay Chauk's gonna try to be our next being, our new superintendent, and our new pedagogy director came by here, introducing the department he has. We'll try to get him here. Michael.
Kirk.
Good old Michael. That's a name.
Kirk, Kirk.
Kirkland, yeah, 'cause I, yeah, Kirkland, yeah, but it's not the store Kirkland. Yeah, I think he'll be here as well.
Remember you asked if he was related to him?
What's that? No.
Remember you asked if he was.
That's right, that's right. Wait, there's no. Okay. Chad returns Parks and Rec Commission. We'll put that together for next month. Also, Jamie Reeves was mentioned. He'll be here and he'll have an update on our softball. Glad to see him back on board. Glad we're addressing water issues. Also, the Victory Mission by Jennifer Jones down there, it's right past Van Buren County, over in Conway County. That was a very good, successful brand opening to help teams, troubled teams, and the Bryant family of Center Ridge has donated a lot of things. That community's really embracing. That's gonna be a very good thing. I appreciate the support for that. Charles and Chad, be safe. And as I mentioned earlier, it was sure good to see Dale Lynch going down to get a haircut. Anything else? If not, I entertain a motion second for the chair.